Good morning. Welcome to the May 27, 2014 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you guys would stand with us, please. Commissioner Mike Vought will lead us in our prayer and our plans. Mike.
Would you bow, please? Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve our county. We ask that you give us wisdom and guidance in this endeavor. We ask that you remember those that have served this country and the reason that we celebrate Memorial Day. Help us as we go through the coming week. Help us to serve you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Call roll, please, Gal.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush. Craig Lynch.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vought.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gal. Item number five, no, I'm sorry, I missed the minutes again. Item number four. Minutes of our May 12 meeting. Calling on our Vice Chair Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I do so make the motion. We approve those minutes.
Thank you, Craig.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, item five. Withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir. Everything's still on there.
We're good to go?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item six. Submitted for preliminary plan approval. Item A, Stewart Springs subdivision, section four. The item number is thirteen dash one zero zero six. Four revisions. Forty-three lots. Forty-two are residential. One is for stormwater detention on fifty-two point seven acres. Zoned residential, medium density, located off Burnt Knob Road. Stewart Springs LLC is the applicant. Doug or Eric, which one?
I'll start out, Mr. Chairman, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill. As, thank you for the introduction and good morning, commission members. This property looks, should look familiar to you. This is located to the north of Burnt Knob Road. This preliminary plat was originally approved back in August of last year. The final plat for phase one of section four was approved at last month's day meeting, actually April 28th. During that meeting, staff did inform the commission that the applicant was exploring the possibility of combining the detention pond lot with some property to the north. That has happened, so you'll see that reflected on both this and the next application, which is the final plat for this particular subdivision. They've also added an extra residential lot, Lot 163, which you can see on there, which is another reason why we're bringing this before you today. We felt that these changes were significant enough to bring these back for your consideration. With that, I'll turn it over to Eric.
Like Doug said, you know, last month, we talked about the detention pond, and basically what's happened is the original design, there was a standalone detention pond for the subdivision. And if you recall, just downstream of that, there was a little, basically a driveway that had a couple of small pipes in it, and then there was a large lake there that Mr. Willis owned, the joint property owner. The developer in turn has had discussions with Mr. Willis, and they've worked out a deal to where basically Lot 198, you'll see here on your screen, this is Mr. Willis's current property line is here, and he owns this track, and then his access is back to Stewart's Creek Road. They're going to join what was going to be the pond in the subdivision, join that property with his, make that Lot 198 of the subdivision, so Mr. Willis's property would be inside the subdivision, and that pond will be one large pond for the subdivision and the existing lake. From a stormwater side, quality and quantity, it's great. It works out good, because it was going to be a little tricky, because we were going to have our, the little pond in the subdivision, and it was going to have to flow through those existing pipes, and so this will basically incorporate that large lake into the drainage, and so from a quality side, it's going to allow for a lot of sediment to drop out, and from a quantity side, this is all in the floodplain anyways, so it's just going to kind of keep doing what it's doing. So, Mr. Willis seems to be pleased with everything, and the only thing that I still need is there's a few more engineering details, that I've seen their calculations, but there's a few more things that I'm working with the engineer on that I hadn't got by this morning. And so, if you do approve this, I would ask that you approve it contingent upon them. Working out those last little engineering details, and it's just some drawings. But other than that, the plat meets all of our requirements.
Thank you.
Question? Eric, the responsibility of maintaining the pond that resides with the homeowners association?
We're going to kind of double that up in this situation. Actually, there's a plat note on the final plat, which we'll get to in a minute, that says that the pond is a responsibility of Lot 198, the owner of Lot 198, because it would all be on that lot. We are also, when we do a maintenance agreement with the HOA or the developer for the subdivision like we typically do, we're also going to make the developer sign the maintenance agreement for this, so that in case that something happens to the owner of 198 or somewhere down the line, that we're still covered. So basically, we'll kind of, we'll be double, the county will be double covered on this.
Okay. I'm reading that note you talked about, and maybe I'm reading it wrong. It says the Stewart Springs Homeowners Association is responsible for all drainage infrastructure that is not residing in Lot 198.
Yes, and that, but that's to specify, but that, what that's referring to is like your, this pipe here, some of the infrastructure, because there's still more stormwater infrastructure inside the actual subdivision where the other lots are, so that's referring to that. But we'll make sure and clean up all that stuff with the, with the maintenance agreements and all that, and we do that at the construction phase.
All these over here have to have flooders insurance. I mean, all these lots, you take a look at, you know, like 174 through, or 167 through 74, and 91, and 88 on the other side, and all those, you know, in the cul-de-sac there.
They've probably been filled, haven't they, brought it back?
They have been filled. Now, some lenders still require flood insurance if it's, if it's on the back of the property, but the flood, the houses themselves and the actual pad will definitely be outside of the flood, so.
Yeah, that was my question. Did they fill the whole lot or just the pad?
Well, like on these track lots here, this has floodway on the back of it, so they cannot fill, and so the front part will be filled, the pad, but over on this area, I'm pretty sure that, and this is, because this is the next phase, this hasn't been built yet, but I think the design for this was for the whole lot to be filled.
If I'm not, and I know we've had some issues out around the lake in my district, if somebody, any part of the lot is in the floodplain, you have to carry flood insurance. Doesn't matter if you're on a hundred acre track and there's a half an acre in the very back, most lending institutions make you have flood insurance, which is, in my opinion, kind of ridiculous, but they don't listen to me.
Well, that's why I was saying, there's about twenty, twenty-five lots in there that that's going to affect them dramatically, so.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments, and Mr. Hill getting the verbiage he needs on information he needs.
Motion to approve in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
If we could, Mr. Chairman, it's, I know the, this item was kind of combined with the, oh, no, I'm sorry, never mind, go ahead. I spoke out of turn. Forget it. Continue.
Never mind.
Sorry.
We're ready for item seven. Submitted for final plat approval. Item A, Stewart Springs subdivision, section four, phase one. The item number is fourteen dash two zero one seven, and this is also revisions. Twelve lots, eleven residential lots, one stormwater detention lot on thirty-two point four-two acres, zoned RM, located off Burnt Knob Road. Salem Creek Partnership is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And what threw me was, I forgot I did the comments as one item, but I listed in the agendas too, so, sorry about that. This is the final plat for the subdivision we just considered. This is section four, phase one, Stewart Springs. Again, this was actually approved at the last day meeting back in April by the Planning Commission. Really, the discussion for this, really the same that we just had on the preliminary plat. You'll see that Lot 163 is now reflected on this final plat, as is the larger pond, Lot 198. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but this would be consistent with what we just considered, and you approved at the preliminary plat stage at the last item.
Thank you, Doug. Anything else, Eric?
Yes.
Make motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight. Submitted for site plan approval. Item A is Danny Patel Site Plan, Phase One. Item number is fourteen dash three zero zero five. Revisions. New construction of nine thousand two hundred and sixty square feet, including the canopies, on five point three acres. Zoned commercial services, located at 118 Crescent Road. Danny Patel is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Again, this site plan should look familiar to you. You recall, this item was considered at both the March 24th and April 14th meetings of the Planning Commission this year. Most of the discussion centered around the entrance and, or the ingress and egress to the property. A lot of the discussion was whether or not we would allow an egress from the property onto 231. The site plan ultimately was approved with just an entrance onto 231, with all exit and traffic going onto Crescent Road and back to 231 via that route. Not long after the April 14th Planning Commission meeting, the applicant and their design engineer asked to sit down with staff to review a possible, some changes to the site, which would possibly allow an egress to 231 as well as to Crescent Road. This plan that you're seeing before you kind of reflects what the applicant's proposal is, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill for more discussion.
As Doug said, we've seen this one before, and after our last meeting, and, you know, we kind of left it where we were going to kind of work out the final details, and the applicant is adamant that the exit onto 231 is crucial, and so, so they went back to the drawing board, and what they've done, as you can see on your screen here, this is similar to what they'd recently had submitted, but they've moved this back, and so currently, this is about two hundred and forty feet from here to the center line of Crescent Road. And so, went out and marked out on the ground, looked at it. In a perfect world, would I still love for all this traffic to come out on Crescent Road? Yes. Do I feel like what they've done is a, is a pretty good compromise? I do. They've, they've moved this back to a point where there's enough site distance here that I feel like any, any existing traffic at the Crescent Road intersection will be able to see what's going on, and they wouldn't kind of be jumping out in front of them, I guess you'd say. We, I've spent a lot of time with Mr. Huddleston, and we looked at this pretty close and looked at it on the ground, and I'm comfortable with this. Along with moving this back to two hundred and forty feet, they have also, they have a deceleration lane here that goes back three hundred and twenty-five feet, which will go almost back to Candy's Campers, if you're familiar with the area. And they have also added an acceleration lane here, which is shaded. This is on the northbound lane of 231, so Crescent Road traffic would, would come from this stop bar into the median, and this would allow traffic to do this. The theory behind this is we're hoping that this acceleration lane will kind of relieve some of the congestion there in that median, and so instead of cars sitting here waiting to merge into this traffic, we're hoping that they'll be able to clear this intersection and be over here kind of staging there, and would allow them to ramp up. I feel pretty good about that. I think, I think that's going to help the situation a lot. They're still proposing to do the right turn lane on Crescent, which I think will also relieve this, this intersection here a little bit, and so overall, I feel, I feel okay with this, and, but before, we wanted to bring it back and let you guys look at it and make sure that you guys didn't have any concerns.
Approve then through the state, Eric, on that, or is this just going to be a proposal to them?
It would be a proposal to them, but I've had some talks with them, and they seem to be okay with it, and I don't, there was nothing that they told me would, they felt like would be a problem with this, so.
So they took out the, what we call the U-turn lane, too.
Right.
Would it be appropriate to put a signage up that says no U-turn at that intersection right there?
I think we could request that.
Like discourage people coming out, turning right, trying to cross two lanes and then stop and make a U.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Now, we would have to request that through T.D. I, now that would be something that, I haven't mentioned that to them, so.
Eric, we were fussing a little bit from the corner Crescent up to where you can enter onto, yeah, 231 right there, but is there a requirement, is there a distance in the engineering field, Bill, I don't know if Bill's been working on it or thinking, what, is there something there that?
There's just.
I know they've moved it back and everything, but is there a requirement from like a major road or road entering from the corner, like a corner situation like this?
There's not, you know, I wish, there's a lot of things you can look at, kind of, you know, as criteria, but, but there's not just a solid number, and I've, I've been through all the books looking for it, and it's just, there's just not a, a sound number that says from an intersection you got to be so far. So it really falls down to just the judgment of the engineer, and that's, that's the reason we've spent a lot of time with, with Bill, and I, I feel like he and I are both on the same page with this. Two hundred and forty feet, and when you mark it on the ground, you stand there at the intersection, I mean, even at sixty miles an hour, I think it's enough. And something else, too, that, that kind of, I guess, appeared on the ground, is when you look at the distance from the edge of the parking lot here on your screen, I'm going to do it up here, from the edge of the parking lot over to the actual edge of pavement, I mean, this is the deceleration lane, the travel lane is here. I mean, we're talking eighty feet probably, this distance, and so, that's, it's a pretty good visual barrier, so it's not like cars are just going to jump out on you. You know, if you're sitting at this intersection here, and a car comes out of the, of the fuel canopy, by the time they drive across, if you're sitting here waiting, I think you're really going to be able to see it, and so that, that kind of, that helped, too. So I think with, with this distance and the distance that they're staying back from the right of way, I think it's kind of a combination that eased my concerns some.
Well, then, what about the, the traffic that's trying to exit from 231 onto Crescent Lane? Or you've got somebody trying to exit the gas station? That's kind of what I'm concerned about, is you've got, you've got people trying to cross paths right there.
We, we still hope, and the engineer and the applicant are on the same page with this, too, we still don't want people to come out here to go north on 231. We, we don't want people to come out here and do this U-turn. That's, you know, that's the whole situation we're trying to avoid.
I'm talking about people who are coming 231, traveling in the same direction as that exit, but now they're going to want to make a right-hand turn on Crescent. So you've got somebody who's coming out going back towards Shalhoville, and somebody who's trying to stop to turn, and they're both got their, where they're going on their minds and not thinking about the other vehicle.
Right.
So that's what I'm talking about, the crossing.
What, another thing that, that we, we would like the applicant to do is a little bit of striping right in here to try and prevent that, to try to, because there's been some conversation before about the difference between people, because people use this shoulder as a deceleration lane for Crescent Road, and I see what you're saying, Rhonda, as far as people coming out and that crossing there. I don't know how to avoid that. But I think by doing a little bit of paint here to make this island stand out where it deciphers between, this is a deceleration lane for the gas station, not for the road, and this, this ramp here to get people onto the highway, I think, I think that radius there and a little paint on the ground's the best we can do.
Eric, because that is fifty-five still right there, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
They hadn't gotten into the sixty-five in that direction there. I see what you've done there, and this is better than, than what we have had. The thing about Crescent Road right now, there, there's still a lot of traffic on that road. I'm still uncomfortable with this, and I'm sure you are, too, anybody that lives out that way. The only thing, you know, this is okay for now, but lately, I've spent a lot of time out in the Crescent area. There is a lot of change going on out there. There's a lot of increase in, in houses in that direction now, a lot of people moving in, that sort of thing. In the future, there's going to be more traffic coming out there, and I'm sure there's going to be a learning curve there for the people that live there and come out, too, that'll be learning this, so. I still have a, I'm still uncomfortable with it.
Eric, let's go over there just a little bit.
Okay.
When, when they come off Highway 231, they got the deceleration lane, and they have to turn in, they cannot go on down 231 in, in that lane.
Right.
They have to get, they have to stay on the highway and come on down to turn right on Crescent Road. Okay. We wanted them originally to exit on Crescent Road, but now the prospect is of exiting back on 231. Okay, when they exit on 231, you've got the acceleration lane going back to Murphishborough. That's going to help clear the congestion on Crescent Road, plus there's going to be a right-hand turn on Crescent Road with a no U-turn sign in that median right there on Crescent Road, so all really they have to do is come out of Crescent Road, go down about three hundred feet, because there's two medians real close together right there.
Three hundred and thirty feet. Yes, sir.
So, if he's coming out of this station, even if he comes out up here, he has to go down about three hundred feet to make his U-turn. He won't congest that median right there.
Right.
That's what, that's what the plan is.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there is a left-hand turn lane down there also. It's, it's the.
There is, at that median, there's a left-hand turn. Goes into Colonial States.
It's the first entrance to Colonial States.
Yeah, it's not far at all.
Yeah.
See, they'll have to come on down here and come on.
With that, interest next, it pushed as far as it is, I would hope somebody wouldn't turn their signal on to turn on Crescent Road before they pass that, because that could be a.
Right.
Kind of confusing, somebody waiting to pull out to see a blinker, they like to go in the store and pull out in the front, but.
I think that's another advantage of this, by pushing it back. But, but if you'll look, I mean, I will give them credit for this, I mean, if you look at the distance here where this thing is, I mean, the building's down here, you know, they originally had it here, which aligns more with the building, so I mean, I feel like they've really pushed it as far north as they can. I mean, it's, and any farther north is going to be separated from the building, so, so I, I really feel like they've moved it as far north as feasible, too, for this, for this layout.
Eric, past the median, south of the median, do we need to have, I mean, you said that they're using the shoulder as a de-acceleration lane now to turn onto Crescent Road. Do we need to have that marked as a de-acceleration lane, or is there something you can do there?
It's not in good enough shape, too. It's not, I mean, it's probably from years of doing this, but it's, you know, it's, it would have to be reworked, and so, and I really feel like that was, that would probably be T.D.'s responsibility. Now, I could ask, I can always ask, but.
Can you ask?
Yeah. I'd be glad to ask.
Do we, is there anything in, proposed in the future for a light at that intersection?
They, they did a signal warrant analysis on this, and it just, it wasn't ready yet.
Okay. Last question, and, and from, from the plans, it looks okay, but I'm going to ask the question anyway. I want to make sure there's no line of sight issues with new landscaping from, as you're sitting at the stop sign at Crescent wanting to turn left or right, that the landscaping on the new property is not a visual obstruction.
Yeah, I don't think it would be, Mr. Kush.
It looks like it's out far enough.
Right, because, yeah, I mean, they're not going to be anything out in the right of way. It's going to be all in here and then along the sides here, so when they come up here, most of it's going to be.
They'll be way, they'll be way past the landscaping requirement.
It shouldn't be an issue.
The site distance there is pretty good, and that's, that's a great, great thing about this. I mean, you can, you can really see back. The, the only other comment I have is, on these plans is, and I, I haven't seen this revised set yet to see if it's on there, but the, the work on Crescent Road, that, that will have to be contingent upon the blessing of our road zipper in it, so, because that's, that's his road, so, I think he's, he's on board with all this, but just to make sure that, that we get the right specs on everything.
Well, and just, as you say that, is the developer then responsible financially for the, these improvements, not, not the county?
No, this will all be the developer.
All right.
And Eric, right now, this is, on Crescent Road is just a single lane coming off of Crescent, Crescent Road, whether you're going straight across and turning left or you're turning right, and there's no kind of acceleration rank lanes, so.
No. There is a wide shoulder here on the, just south of Crescent Road, it's in, it's in pretty good shape, that's kind of gets used for an acceleration lane.
So this is an opportunity for the county to get upgrades to this intersection for all the people that are on Crescent Road at no additional cost to.
Christiana Middle School is less than a mile south of here, so there's a lot of traffic that cuts through this area, and they're going, in the mornings, they're turning right there, so, to your eye, Jim.
With him putting this in, the county has sufficient right of way to do the turn lanes there as you propose.
Yes, sir, because that, actually, all that work would probably be, it's right on the edge of the T.D. right of way, and so it's, the right of way comes back a good piece.
Come on right here, if they're going back to Murphishborough, they'll run right down here. And if we put signage in there, best exit to, is this right here?
Eric, I know this is going to put you on the spot, and I don't know whether I'd apologize for that up front or not, but.
That's okay.
The Planning Commission, especially this Planning Commissioner, relies on you guys for input. It's a good plan or not a good plan, and a month or so ago, you were really uncomfortable with that entrance and exit, or that exit right there, and a lot of us agreed with you. What's your recommendation now?
My recommendation would be to approve it. Like I said earlier, would I love for there just to be an exit on Crescent Road, yes, but, but I feel like what they're doing is, is the best thing that they can do with, with the way this property lays out. I mean, two hundred and forty feet, I feel like, I feel like they've, they've done as much as they can do, and so, and they are adamant that it's just crucial that that exit comes out, and I understand that, so, so I would recommend approval.
From a safety perspective, it's, it's as good as it's going to get. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think as good as it would get would be to put it all on Crescent Road, but I think for them to have an exit onto 231, I think this is as good as it gets.
That's including the no U-turn sign?
I, I will, I can make that request to T.D.
So T.D. has to approve the no U-turn, and they also have to approve the acceleration line?
Yeah, I mean, basically, they have to approve anything that goes on in there right of way, but they are, they're on board with.
All right.
With site plans like this.
So, so in a motion, we would certainly want to say with staff comments and maybe the caveat of, and approval of T.D.?
Yeah.
Okay.
Eric, before we vote, I'd like to hear the applicant make their plea one more time about why that exit is so crucial.
Sure. I got the short straw.
Good morning, Chairman Phillips, members of Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'd like to start out by thanking Eric and Doug for really working with us hard on this. We've had a lot of meetings. As Eric said in response to Mr. Sandlin's question, there, there are no study, there aren't, there's a lot of study on this kind of thing, but there are no numbers that you can go to a book and a table and say it's got to be this far away. I will say, we do this a lot. We do this all, all the time. We design access for commercial developments at intersections, at busy intersections, at urban intersections, at rural intersections, and this access is pushed further away than a lot of the ones we do. We do a lot of these right-in, right-outs. It's what T.D. looks for, for access. They don't want us messing with the median. They would rather us put a right-in, right-out, out on the main road than trying to create new medians for full access. Now, we have worked with this client for a few months now, and we've talked about, you know, what about just having access that comes into the site on 231 but leaves on Crescent Road? And from, for him, it's, it's a business decision, and it's the way the business operates. This is a convenience store. People want to come in, do what they have to do. Hopefully, they'll learn and go on out Crescent Road, but a lot of times, they don't do that. For a convenience store, you go in, and then you go out the same way you came, and keep heading in the, in the same direction. For a lot of convenience store traffic, a lot of it's what we call pass-by traffic, For a lot of convenience store traffic, a lot of it's what we call pass-by traffic, so the vehicles that use this are already passing by the site. It's not so much a destination where I'm going to go down to this market, and then I'm going to turn around and go back the way I came. If I'm going to do that, I'm going to pick another store out there and do that. So, what I'm doing is pulling into this site, doing what I need to do, and leaving. So, and he has been very adamant that it's critical to the business operations of this. Mr. Bratcher, I won't let him speak yet unless you really want to. He's been in this business for a long time, and he recognized, you know, you can't have an in-only for a convenience store on a main road. That's inviting probably more abuse than what we're talking about here. Again, a lot of our sites are just 200-foot frontages on the main roads. We have a right-in, right-out at that location closer than this is. This one's pushed back all the way, 240 feet, and we've been talking to T-Dot about this. We get these kind of accesses approved through T-Dot all the time. They will be, they will have to approve not only what we're doing with this access, not only the deceleration lane we're providing, not only the acceleration lane we're providing going northbound. They also have to approve these Crescent Road improvements that, as Mr. Everwater pointed out, we're providing not only for our customers, but also for the people that travel out there on Crescent Road. So, they have, T-Dot will have to approve those as well, but we feel confident that they will.
Bill, I understand the convenience store not being a destination, but what about those retail shops? Couldn't they potentially be a destination?
They could be. It depends on what they are. Those are more specialty-type things. Usually, those are people that will use those, probably will become, have a habit of using them. They won't be as much new customers as just a pass-by customer. So, those are the kinds of customers that will know to use Crescent Road as they leave.
Bill, I hear, like, Debut's Market and Dollar Store and all of them, they have best access to Church Street, Barfield Road, I believe, something somewhere. Is there a possibility we put a sign here, best access to Murfreesboro would be Crescent Road?
That'd be fine.
That'd be a voluntary thing to put up.
That'd be fine, and I thought, and I thought the no U-turn sign was a great suggestion also, but, yeah, we can do that. And, yeah, you mentioned examples. I mean, I can start throwing examples out all over the place. Right at my office, you've got the BP, you've got the Kangaroo up at Memorial and Thompson Lane. I mean, this is done often.
Other questions for Mr. Huddleston? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments and approval by T-Dot, and approval from the county highway superintendent. I see him in the audience looking around, like, and I heard his name mentioned a minute ago.
I'll second that. Do you have anything you'd like to comment before we vote?
Well, actually, yes. It's just a suggestion, but it addresses a concern that Mr. Lynch and Mr. Jordan had earlier about the people coming out of Murfreesboro towards Shelbyville in the new deceleration lane to, to maybe ensure that they do turn into the site, as opposed to going on down to Crescent and turning in. If that island were extended, this island here were extended, nice the edge of the existing shoulder on that toward the travel lane right here, so these people had to turn in or run over that island, that might keep them from putting on their blinker too early and getting in that deceleration lane and then going on down to Crescent.
I was wondering if that was an actual island or just painted on the pavement. Is that an actual concrete island?
There will be.
I mean, there will be. I mean, yeah. Sometimes they just paint them on the pavement, so I didn't know if it would actually be.
I think all of our big concerns about this whole project was in the early morning school, people going over to get a sausage biscuit, coming back over. I think that was one of our big concerns.
Eric, I'd like to put a contingency on the motion for you to contact T-Dot and see if we can't get a de-acceleration lane into Crescent Road, too. See if we can get that. I think that would help. Once traffic out there got used to that, then they would know the difference. Make sure you contact them, see if we can't get something done there. Since it's being used that way anyway.
Is that okay with the motion?
That's fine with me to include that in the motion.
Okay with the second?
Well, yeah, it is, but let me ask you, are you saying that, you're saying you would like for that to happen, but it's, we'd like to ask T-Dot, but it's not mandatory?
Right.
Okay.
We'll leave it that way.
Right.
And I'll ask Mr. Huddleston if he'll take into account what Mr. Brooks has said, try and implement that.
We'll modify that. We'll have to work with T-Dot on that in particular, about those islands. They don't want them to become a hazard.
I agree that can be when that curving's all the way out to the travel lane. It might could be, it might could be concrete as shown, and then maybe some strifing to extend that island out with strifing, so that it's not such a hazard.
Other discussion? Other questions?
I'm glad the superintendent's brought that up, because that has been pretty much a lot of my own concern right there, is that island and that turny, and I'm glad you brought that up in particular. And as I said earlier, Crescent is not, it's going to continue to grow, is what we're seeing out there. This traffic's going to continue in what we got there. I'll be voting with a concern when I make my vote on this, because I live out that direction, that area right there, and I know it's hard to make it perfect whenever we have these situations there. Eric, appreciate what your study you've done here for us in that direction right there, so, and I think we'll be coming back to this area right here, especially if those shops come in.
Other questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for working on that some more and bringing it back to us. Good job. Item 8B, AT&amp;T Cellular Tower Site. The item number is 14-3010. New construction of 148-foot monopole tower with accessory structures. The equipment will be in that shelter, as well as the generator, on 10.98 acres, zoned residential, low-density, located at 4091 Little Rock Road. New Singular Wireless LLC is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Little Rock Road. The property, you can see the cell tower, this is the proposed lease area, and then the accessway back to the cell tower. This was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception at their March 12, 2014 meeting. The proposals for 148-foot monopole tower with accessory structures, as you said, equipment shelter, generator, those kind of things. The tower is only going to have one carrier at this point, AT&amp;T, but it does have the ability to accommodate three other carriers for co-location. Whenever those come, you won't really see those. Those are done administratively, but since this is the first time we've seen this tower application, we wanted to bring it before you. As far as the comments that staff had on this, we only had a couple. Those have been addressed to our satisfaction. There were really any special conditions approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals on this application, so with that, be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I know it's going to probably show my ignorance, but why is it before us if it's already been before BZA?
Well, it was before BZA for the use. It's coming before you as far as the site layout, being a new tower and new structures and everything. That's not unusual in that situation. Sometimes, like, for instance, if we see a, like, a community assembly use, a medium is a church that is over a certain, not population, but certain capacity, thank you, a certain capacity, they'll have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeal first for the use, and then it comes back to you for site plan approval.
So, the BZA has approved the plan, and you're asking for us to approve the site plan?
Right. They approved the use of the property for the cellular tower. Now, this is coming back before you as far as the physical layout and whether or not it meets the criteria of the ordinance.
Isn't it over the height requirement, Doug?
The what now?
Isn't it over the height requirement?
Well, the way we handle cell towers now, under our new ordinance, we used to do it where they would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a condition, at least permit and a height variance, because like you said, the height in that, the height limitation in that district's 35 feet. But when we adopted the new ordinance, we basically revamped how we handled cellular towers, and the way we handle that now is the process, it has to go through either special exception, or by right, depends on the height of the tower, so they don't actually have to ask for a height variance. They do have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for something this high in this zone for special exception use, but we don't make them go for the height variance anymore. So, it's built into the ordinance that they just go through the one process for the special exception.
BZA approved the height as well.
Well, they approved, the height was part of the application. You know, their application was for a cellular tower of 148 feet, so that was, that was what their application was. So, I guess, yes, sir, but there wasn't a separate height variance because of the way the ordinance is structured now.
Well, there's a signalization requirement, too, for certain height and planes.
For lighting, you mean? Yeah, I think it's 200 feet, I think is what it is.
It's under that.
Right, and they have to, as part of our requirements, they have to submit documentation from the FAA or wherever saying that it has to be lit or it doesn't. Just approval here doesn't, you know, exempt them from any of the federal requirements. If the FAA comes back and says, yes, it has to be lit, then they'll have to do that.
So, any additions to this? Y'all can do a minister.
Correct, yes, ma'am. Because basically, what's going to happen is, and let me see if I can't find that real quick here, this, they sent the whole sheet. I can forward it to that one here, just help out a little bit, I think, here. This is the actual kind of a cross-section of the tower. This is where they're going to be AT&amp;T, and then you'll see there's three co-location opportunities below it. So, the future carriers will all be, this is as high as it'll get, because these other ones will be a little lower on the pole.
It seems like it's been a while since we've looked at a cell tower, but I remember when Gary Farley was on here, he always asked about, I guess, for emergency services, there being like a repeater or something like that. Is that common practice now, or do we have to ask for that?
Well, I mean, we can work with the cell tower folks if it's determined that something like that's needed out in this area. Now, we cannot condition it upon that, so that's really up to the county and the cell communication folks to work on that.
I didn't know there was any kind of regulation with that.
Right, no, I don't think there is.
Doug, I'm curious about the note about provide documentation for fire suppression.
Yes, sir.
Why is that an issue?
The area is currently outside of 1,000 feet of a hydrant. Now, we do provide a way in our zoning ordinance to say, okay, if it's outside of a fire hydrant, you can sprinkle the building. Of course, this is just a small equipment shelter, and, I'm not sure where that note is. They actually added a note on to here about that. I'm just trying to remember what. C4, thank you.
Yeah, I see it. Fire, it's, yeah, I see, it's on the right side hand, it's the right side of the page.
But since this is outside of 100 foot of a fire, 1,000 foot of a fire hydrant, we asked them to show us what it is that they are proposing for fire suppression on the property. They have done that. I talked with Mr. Honeycutt before the meeting, Ken Honeycutt, who kind of works both with the county and also Consolidated Utility, and he said that that was fine as far as he was concerned.
Other questions?
Sir, and this is just a site plan, and we're not talking about use at all. I mean, all we're talking about is a site plan, and apparently it meets all our requirements. I'll make us approve subject to all staff comments.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Comments, discussion, ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number nine, a staff report, and before we get into some of those things, let me go ahead and cover that. Our next scheduled meeting was for Monday, June 9, and that's a 6:00 PM meeting, and that meeting has been canceled. I don't believe there were any public hearings scheduled and no urgent business, and so if it's okay with you guys, we'll take that Monday evening off, and that will make our next scheduled meeting on Monday, June 23, I believe, at 9:00 AM here in the Planning Department. Item number nine, A, Proposed Zoning Amendments for Entertainment and Amusement Services Outdoor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is a continuation of the discussion we had last month on this particular item. We presented these proposed amendments to you. Several issues were raised in the discussion on this particular item, including maybe allowing the uses and more than just the AR zone, how the amendments would affect community assembly uses, if somebody wanted to put playgrounds or something like that on a existing church property, and also the effect that this may have on subdivision amenities such as tennis courts, pools, et cetera. Really, and you've got a copy, we sent out an email with the link to those. They're also on your table before you. Most of the amendments that you see, the first three or four pages or so, are pretty much the same. Those really haven't changed any. Now, what I did do, and I guess this would be on the second, the back of the second page, the full page, at the very top, you'll say, in addition, says the following amendments are proposed to clarify the regulations would not apply for community assembly uses subdivision amenities and those kind of things. In Chapter 2, and this is where we have our use classification, I propose that we would amend that particular section for community assembly to include not just the activities typically performed at or by institutions for various social, religious, athletic, or recreational purposes, but ask also adding, including accessory uses such as fellowship halls, recreation facilities, which would help hopefully clarify, again, what our intent was on this is really your more standalone-type uses, not the uses that were accessory to existing facilities. Also, to further clarify some of the other issues, you'll see under Chapter 4 Residential District Regulations, that this is some existing language, but we would amend it to say recreation facilities exclusively for the use of the residents, which would include subdivision amenities such as clubhouses, pools, those kind of things, on lots identified on approved and recorded final plats, subject to the provisions of the site plan, for site plans found in Section 1404. This would ensure that these type of developments would come before you, such as the pool for Lewis Downs did. They had to submit a site plan for that, but this would clarify that, this again, so it wouldn't fall under the, this particular category we're talking about. Also, we would add a provision to the ordinance in residential, as you can see on the back of that, the front of the last full page here, operation of a playfield or other recreational facility, again, clubhouse, pool, tennis courts, those kind of things, for employees, members, residents, patrons, or others participating in a principal activity on the same zone lot. And then in Chapter 5, 6, and 7, we'd add basically the same thing, I think in Chapter 8 as well, on the back of the last page, that same language. It was already actually in Chapter 5. Why we didn't put this particular language in, the rest of the chapters, I'm not sure, but you can see that we've changed it to pretty much say the same thing going forward with the rest of the chapters, 5 through 8. Again, that would help clarify that these existing businesses, again, we're not trying to say if they're an existing operation or something like that, that they can't have facilities, those type of things. Again, we're really shooting more for the standalone uses, and you'll see on your screen here, based on our discussion, I kind of went the exact, I went the opposite direction what we had originally, before we were just allowing them in the AR zone by special exception and not the rest of the zones, but I did, based on these amendments, decide just to go ahead and put special exception across the board. So, again, it would be permitted, it would just be a matter of going to the Board of Zoning Appeals for that. So, I'm more than happy to answer any of the questions that you may have, if you think this is ready to go forward. Again, this isn't critical, that we brought this up in June, since the Board of Commissioners doesn't meet in July anyway, we figure we could just push it into the July Planning Commission meeting for a public hearing, and then the Board of Commissioners could consider it in August. But outside of this, we didn't have any other zoning amendments or rezoning here, applications made this last time.
Doug, I have one question. When you start to list examples, isn't it usually worthwhile to say, including but not limited to? And you're listing those, that way you're not just saying, because et cetera? I'm concerned that that, you know.
Yeah, and I guess, I thought, in my mind, I guess that's what I was thinking when I put et cetera, was I wasn't limiting it to that, but to clarify, we can certainly change that. That would be an easy fix. Okay, we can do that.
Doug, the changes the legislature has made, like an entertainment for agriculture, aren't we fair to recover it in?
Yeah, I mean, and that's going to have to come on a case-by-case basis, really, and as part of our training here, that's one of the bills we'll be discussing, but, no, you're right. And, but just because, and I guess the reason it's listed as SE on here, under the AR zone, is just because a property is zoned, AR doesn't necessarily mean they're doing agricultural. It's not an absolute requirement, they have to be doing agricultural to do that, but in a situation where something falls under that particular piece of legislation, then yes, they could just, I don't think we could prohibit them from doing anything based on that. You're right.
They wouldn't have to come and get the special exception?
If it's, if it's accessory to an approved agricultural use on the property, based on the new legislation, I think they could just do it by right, because it would be exempt from zoning regulations at that point.
They would have to get the property zoned agricultural services or AR, whatever, would they not? That average shake his head, no.
I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think so.
Because agriculture is used by right in the residential zone.
Right.
But I do know a couple of our corn maze people have come and gotten zoned agriculture.
Right, of course, and that was, yeah, you're right, and that was because at the time, they were having to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals every year. Of course, now, we changed the ordinance to allow that by right in AR zone, but in light of that new legislation, you know, they may not have to really go through that anymore.
Only thing we're doing is discussing today, and it'll be on, probably in July.
Yes, sir, yeah. What we'll do is, if you're comfortable with this, you know, based on the changes that Rhonda suggested, and then, you know, what other discussion we may have here, we'll just bring this in July, is what we'll do.
Don't need a motion or anything.
No, at this point, if you're comfortable with it, we can just move forward with it.
Any other discussion? Item number 9B, I'll let you take that over.
Yes, sir. Okay, Sam is here. I didn't see him come in. Yes, as part of our ongoing training activities and everything, of course, you know, planning commissioners are required to have four hours of training every year for, per state requirement, chapter 862. Plus, I thought this would be a good opportunity to kind of enlighten you on some of the planning legislation that was approved at this particular term of the state legislature. I've asked Mr. Sam Edwards to come and speak to you regarding these laws, as he's very familiar with these. What you're seeing here, I have a, I passed out a thing at the beginning here, or actually, I think, I think actually Gail did.